We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Unintelligible).
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Notice requirements of the open public meeting law have been satisfied concerning this meeting. The New York Tribune, the Star Ledger published a notice on December 6, 2019. It was posted on the municipal bulletin board, and it should be so noted in the minutes of this meeting. Councilman Anderson, Councilman Ficarra, Councilwoman Druck, Councilwoman Small, Councilwoman Meehan, Councilman Patel, Councilman Bauer, Vice President DeJesus, and President Spiller.
Mr. Wolfman. Thank you. Do we roll call Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Gordain?
Here.
Mr. Delapietro?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Present.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place of our posted as follows: December 2, 2019, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Avonel Middle School, and the Board of Education Administration Building, and on the school district website. Oh, and Mr. Tambrelle, I didn't see you sneak in.
I am here.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to open the public portion of this meeting?
Motion.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. The public portion is now open. If anybody from the public has any comment, please step up. Here are no comment from the public. Can I get a motion that the public portion of this meeting be closed?
Motion.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. You can ask council if they have any comments.
At this time, I would like to ask council if they have any comments.
At this time, any of the board members have any comments or things they'd like to state?
Mr. Wolfman, will you please note that Mr. Harris is here?
So noted.
Thank you.
We'll continue with our meeting. Dr. Zaga?
Thank you. In March 2017, the taxpayers of Woodbridge voted overwhelmingly to support a referendum that was a direct result of the cooperative relationship between the town council and the Board of Education here in Woodbridge. Our residents voted to support our schools and our brave vision for our children's future. The referendum included a new Ross Street School, substantial renovations to Woodbridge Middle School, Internet access points in every classroom, full-day kindergarten, and safety and security upgrades in every school. Our students and staff are now realizing the benefits of that referendum. Ross Street was on schedule and opened on time on September 4, 2019. It was the first new construction school building in our district in 50 years. Ross Street students and staff went from their old, 100-year-old building to one of the most impressive school buildings in New Jersey. The new building has a big airy cafeteria, casual areas for student collaboration, Creative Commons, and a wonderful courtyard that can serve as an outdoor class. The old Ross Street is slowly being demolished. We're waiting on an asbestos remediation on the roof to be completed so that the building can be completely demoed. Once it is demoed, we can begin Phase 2 of Ross Street, which will include a brand-new, full-size gymnasium, music classrooms, and an outside playground. We expect that work to be completed by September 2020. Woodbridge Middle School is behind schedule due to complications during the course of renovations, but we hope to have the building opened for Christmas. Woodbridge Middle School will be completely renovated, including new science labs, a new HVA system, HVA system, and a full-size gym. Both the Ross Street and Woodbridge Middle School gym will be used by the community and the Woodbridge Township Rec. Department. Another item included in the 2017 referendum was installing Internet access points in every classroom. That was completed last year. By allowing more access points, we are fully capable of allowing each of our 13,700 students and 1,200 staff members to access the Internet at the same time without any interruption or delay. This is something that allows us to move ahead with our idea of digital curriculum and digital classrooms. A large component of the 2017 referendum was full-day kindergarten. Working with the township, we were able to lease the former St. Cecilia's School, provide enough classroom space for full-day K. Our school district and our entire township became substantially better when we were able to get this done. Safety and security was also included in the 2017 referendum. We continue to upgrade our security systems in our buildings. Our inventory of cameras and security equipment continues to grow. We were one of the first school districts in New Jersey to provide fully-equipped police officers patrolling our schools. We're also one of the only school districts to utilize top-of-the-line police radios that communicate between schools and first responders. We've expanded our security department to include residency checks. Unfortunately, we have some families who wish to attend our schools who don't live in our town. This is a problem because property taxes paid by our residents fund our schools. Our attendance officers saved or recouped tens of thousands of dollars by investigating those who wished to dishonestly send their children to our schools. Our school district-town council cooperation is a model throughout New Jersey. We save taxpayers of Woodbridge millions of dollars by working together. Over the years, we have upgraded all of our high school athletic fields, gyms, and auditoriums. We've added playgrounds in our elementary schools and walking paths. We built a new school and renovated two others. Although it may not seem like these physical improvements have an academic impact, they certainly do. For every dollar that we don't spend on our buildings and grounds, we can reinvest that money into our classrooms. Because we haven't spent money on our grounds, we've been able to do the following over the past two and a half years. We provide, as I said, full-day kindergarten, which is not only a tremendous financial benefit to parents who no longer have to pay for half-day daycare, but the results of our research have shown significant academic growth at the end of the year for our full-time kindergarten children as compared to our half-time kindergarten children. We pay for an SAT test for every one of our high school seniors during October, every October. That includes 900 seniors. We pay for one advanced placement test for every high schooler each year. We offer SAT boot camp three times a year, which is an intensive review for the Saturday SAT administration. We fund tuition for Lincoln Tech for our students who are interested in earning a professional degree. We supply Chromebooks to every one of our high school students, approximately 4,000 Chromebooks in grades nine through 12. We supply iPads for every one of our eighth graders, approximately 1,000 iPads. We funded our JROTC program at Woodbridge High School, which is very, very popular. It's fully funded now, but for the first few years, those funds came from our budget. Middle school sports we brought back, which is very, very popular. We're the state model in dual enrollment courses with Syracuse University, NJIT, Rutgers, Rider, Kane, Middlesex County College, and Berkeley. We offer engineering courses in all three of our high schools. We have digital curriculum. We have devices for all of our teachers. We fund RISE, which is our adult transition program. And if you've visited Mayor Max's Cafe, those are our students who run that cafe, and they are doing a tremendous job. Similar program, Woodbridge High School, is our SOAR program. Also, PACE is our extended-year program that we provide for hundreds of students during the summer. We have an ESL preschool. We have random drug testing in our high schools to combat teen drug abuse. We've initiated numerous pilot classes. We have new courses every year. One of our most popular classes is American Sign Language that many of our students take. And finally, we continue to support our veterans and have our veterans participate in Veterans Day celebrations in each and every one of our schools. None of these academic programs would have been possible if we had the budget for our buildings and grounds. Thank you to the Board of Education for support, and to the Town Council, and Mayor McCormick for making it a really good time to be raising your children in Woodbridge Township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President, and thanks, Dr. Zaga. That was a pretty impressive list of things that you were able to do. I didn't even know half of them, so congratulations. It's tremendous. I thought I would talk about the enrollment numbers. The campaign's over now. All the nonsense can stop, and we can just look really down at what's actually happening in our schools. It's no secret that we are seeking to develop, redevelop our downtown. There are two projects that are in progress now. There's several others on the horizon. I have said over and over again that I believe that without bringing people downtown with incomes, our downtown will fail. It's okay now. It's even good now, but it's not great, and we have a lot of work to do. So we are working on that. 2006, '07, that school year, 13 years ago, when we took office, there were 13,444 students in our school district. In 2019, '20, it increased to 13,692. I'll get this to everybody by email later in the week. So our school enrollment went up 248 overall, total, over 13 years. Kindergarten alone went up 278 students because of, as Dr. Zaga said, we went from half-day to full-day kindergarten. So we had 766 kids 13 years ago, half-day, now we have 1,044 kids. So the total enrollment's up 248. The kindergarten enrollment is up 278, which says simply that the other enrollment in every grade combined besides kindergarten has been down by 30 students, essentially even. And this is despite the fact that we opened up 350 units in Avonel Station Village, which produced 37 students so far. We opened up 150 units in the Grand and Metro Park, which produced 21 students so far. So there have been 58, only 58 students from 500 occupied apartments, which is about what we would expect from those transit villages. There are studies all over the state, all over the country, about transit village developments and how you simply don't get the same amount of schoolkids from a transit village development because the people that rent those apartments are much different, have different goals and objectives than the people that rent apartments, say, miles away from a train station. They tend to be more movable, more mobile, I should say, and it simply does not produce the same number of kids. But nonetheless, whatever it produces, we're more than happy to educate them. So the 30 students, really 88 would have been the decrease in the total enrollment. 58 came in because of the two developments, so it still had a 30-student decline. We have added capacity, as Dr. Zaga said. Ross Street School and Woodbridge Middle School, both are increased capacity, anywhere between 150 and 200 students. School 29 is way, way bigger than School 24. That whole population moved over. I went to St. Cecilia's at one time. It had probably 1,600 students in it. There's a few less classrooms now, but in any event, there was 524, and now that at least twice that can handle in School 29. And the referendum we're going to talk about later will produce another probable 500 seats of classroom space. So in the last, from 2017 to 2023, there will be 1,000 new desks in our school district, 1,000. So we only needed 58 for 500 units. We couldn't get to 1,000 new students unless we brought 30,000 more people, 20,000 more people into this town, and that's simply not going to happen. We have the projects. There's five or six downtown. They're all in the neighborhood of 200 units. You can do all the math and realize if 500 produce 58, we really have nothing to worry about because we have plenty of space in our schools for any development. The Ross Street School is where those kids will go. The Avonel 4 and 5, we'll talk about. That's where Station Village kids go. Woodbridge Middle's where the downtown kids go. You know, I'm tired of hearing our schools are overcrowded. They are not. I'm tired of hearing we have no more room for more kids. We do. I remember years ago, there was 17,000 kids in our schools. Now there's 13,000 to 14,000, and we had no problem with the 17,000. If anything, we're, aside from these two referendums, there was a referendum in 2003, which increased capacity in a whole lot of schools. So we are far better able to handle the student population that we have to handle now than probably at any time in the school district's history, and especially after the next referendum comes in and provides those extra seats. So again, the campaign's over. All the nonsense about redevelopment being bad because it's bad for our schools, clearly that is not the case. We can handle anything that comes from any additional downtown redevelopment project. So I just wanted to make sure that we put that into the record. And again, I'll make the numbers available. I'm waiting for a few other things to make them a little more firm when it comes to the capacities of the new schools, but I'll get that out to everybody so that you also can defend all of us when we are hit with the fact that development is bad for our schoolkids. It's simply not. Thank you, Council President.
I'll introduce the grant writer.
I'm next, too. Okay, I'm next, too. I would like to introduce this young lady. To my far left is Megan Kushba, a Port Reading longtime resident and Woodbridge High School graduate, and star softball player, I might add. She has replaced our grant writer. She works as John Haggerty's assistant in the Communications Division of the town through the mayor's office. She's also moonlining as our grant writer. We want to be as aggressive as we can seeking grants for the schools. You see, a lot of the things that Dr. Zaga talked about, a lot of those things are coverable by grants. So far, she has worked with Linda Cologne and Jessica Davidson, middle school substance abuse coordinators, on the Take Vape Away Grant, worked with Principal Patton and phys ed. teacher Nicole Stephen in School 28 for the PE for Life Speedstacks Sports Pack Grant Program. Don't know what that is, but it sounds good. Worked with Sustainable New Jersey, which, as you know, were the champion for many, many years. There's now a whole lot going on with Sustainable New Jersey and the school districts. They expanded from the towns into the schools for green teams, reducing waste, et cetera. The Ezra Jack Keats Foundation Mini Grants Program for students to learn with classroom curriculum, such as developing creative academic skills. There's a Fund for Teachers Grant Program. There's federal library programs for grants that she's working with, Sarah D'Orillo, who's the English supervisor. The point is, please let your teachers know, let your principals know, let your curriculum coordinators know. We'll look for grants, and we have a company that helps us find grants, but sometimes the best sources for the grants are the teachers themselves and the aides themselves. So when they see something they need and they can identify a source, they've got to let us know. Megan will get working on it, and she'll try to do all she can. She's taken all the courses. She's been all over the state learning everything she can about grant writing, and she's done a phenomenal job so far. So please let us know how we can help you. We're happy to, and she's fully dedicated toward helping the district and the township find more grant opportunities. So thank you.
Thank you.
That takes me into Number 4. We should have had a little break here. So I talk to people all the time when I go to these events. You know, they'll have a pancake breakfast, a spaghetti dinner, a turkey tray, you name it. And the PTAs often will go to their database, their support base of the parents of their kids. But if you really want to make money, and if you really want to have a successful event, you've got to expand your horizons, and you've got to attract people to come and attend your events where you can make money, not just from the same people. If you're going to make money from those people, you might as well just ask them for a donation and forget the event. I used to always say, when my daughter had these ridiculous wrapping papers in St. John Vienni, they'd send the kid home with $100 worth of wrapping paper, and I'd say, "How much do you make on $100 worth of wrapping paper?" They said, "20 bucks." I'd say, "Here's 25. Leave me alone." You can't keep hitting the parents over and over again to buy the tickets for the events. We can help. We've got the mayor's Facebook page. We all have Facebook pages. I'm sure you all do, too. We have the website. We have all the different social medias besides Facebook. We have the weekly E-News that goes out, and I believe you guys, they distribute it.
Yes, it gets distributed through the various school district webpages, et cetera, and the school district administration is very active in getting us each week a list of events that we post.
Right, right. We put your events in our Friday News Blast, and that goes out to thousands of people. That is what your teachers, your PTA presidents, your principals need to use to help you make these events successful. I was talking to the, who had the breakfast at the Yalss this week? Why am I drawing a blank?
School 28.
I'm sorry?
School 28.
School 28, PTO, right. So we were talking about that, and that was in our newsletter. So there were people there because they saw it in our newsletter. People will want to help you, but they have to know what's going on. So please, when you have events, let us help you publicize them so that you can get support from outside of your normal support. You can't keep asking the parents to pony up money. You've got to get, you know, more help. So please let us help you.
Mr. March.
Thank you, Madam President. As everyone is aware, we are just under four months away from Census 2020, April 1. What is significant to know that is we need an accurate population count as of April 1, and without that, we face, you know, cuts in federal funding. We possibly face cuts in our congressional representation. I was here for the last census and the census before, and each time, we've engaged a school district as a partner. Dr. Zaga, I'd like to ask you to assign a representative to represent the district. Worked with Mr. Haggerty and myself. The problem with the 2010 census, not in Woodbridge but nationwide, was there was over a million underage children never accounted for. And if you do the math and realize, you know, just the simple math, it's like 20,000 per state, and we don't want to have any of the kids undercounted, and realize that you're probably the best direct conduit to reach out. So if you can assign someone, hopefully by Monday, we'd like to announce a complete committee next Tuesday, and we'd be looking forward to working with your office and encourage kids' involvement as well, the students to be involved as well. So we look forward to hearing from you, both Mr. Haggerty and I. So thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, I guess, Dr. Zaga and I will both talk about the referendum 2020. We have a project in Avonel, the old Woodbridge Developmental Center. It's 58 acres that we bought from the state for $5 million. We closed in June, and then a couple of months ago, we closed on a piece of land from Conrail along the border of the state property for $2 million. And then we went out through Carroll, as the executive director of the Redevelopment Agency, we went out to seek possible developers of that site. We had 16 proposals. We narrowed it down to five, took a strong look at those five, and selected one to begin negotiations with. We are in those negotiations now. We plan to sell that piece of land to them for a significant sum of money. We then, they have obtained an option to purchase the premier diecast building next door of that property, right in front of the property, actually. That is a perfect site for a new Avonel Street School 4 and 5. Now that Ross Street is taken out of commission, I believe Avonel 4 and 5 is the oldest, if not the second oldest, in the district. So we think the district would be very well-served by a brand-new school 4 and 5 on that site. We have a referendum with several council members, a referendum committee with several council members, several board members, administrators from the board, and administrators from the town. And we have been meeting every couple of months, talking about what we can do with a referendum in 2020 to provide the approval to build that school. If we go to a referendum, we will get a sum of money from the state. We will then pay the balance of the cost of constructing that school from the money we make on the sale of the land and from the money we will make from the taxes on the land. It will get a payment in lieu of taxes. It's a pilot. Pilot's not a dirty word. It was during the campaign. I don't know why people don't understand the fact that pilots have made such an amazingly positive impact on this town. Pilots are what paid for the 2017 referendum. Pilots are what paid for the $40 million in school improvements, the facilities for the turf fields, the tracks, the tennis courts, the cricket fields, the gym floors, the playgrounds, the auditorium seating, all those community things that are on school property. The pilots paid for all of those. And this one project that will happen, it'll probably start with engineering and things this year and start construction next year, and hopefully be up and running in two years. We will make enough money on that one project to not only fund the Avonel Street School 4 and 5, the new one, we will be able to afford a total of $87 million worth of other improvements. The school itself is probably $35 million. So as we're talking to the district, and Dr. Zaga can certainly elaborate, we're looking at significant additional space on Schools 28 and 25. We're looking at both Schools 22 and 24, which are not connected. There are a series of pods, like School 25 used to be. We're trying to connect those with hallways that kids don't have to go out in the rain to move from class to class, or the cold, or the snow, or whatever. We're also looking at increased technology, and probably not the biggest dollar amount, but I think the most important amount is a very significant allocation of money to school security. That is our prime responsibility, public safety, and everybody, when they send their kids to school, wants them to be as safe as possible. So we expect to spend several million dollars working with Board of Ed employee Brian Small, council member. He and his staff have been involved in discussions, as have Dr. Massimino and all the people in this room. We've all had discussions about how to make our schools safer, and we're going to provide the money for that. Included will also be money for STEM labs in each of our five middle schools. We all know the importance of that. And then every school will get some kind of allocation for some kind of project so that everybody sees something from this referendum. It'll be a total of $87 million. We'll probably get anywhere from $10 to $15 million in state aid. We could go without a referendum, and then we couldn't get the state aid, and if we're going to get $10 to $15 million for free, we might as well go for the referendum. Dr. Zaga said the last one passed overwhelmingly. I think it was 3,600 to 800, so it's about 4 and 1/2 to 1. I would expect this one to pass overwhelmingly again. I know I plan to hit every PTO. Dr. Zaga hit a whole bunch with me last year. Councilpeople came, board members came. We've talked to the teachers' union. We've talked to principals. We've talked to senior groups. We've talked to everybody possible to explain how this $87 million referendum, which will be paid for by one project and not by taxpayers, explain how important this is to the future of Woodbridge Township, because, as I've always said, community is known by the schools it keeps. The better our schools, the better our community. We could keep the money, but I don't think it makes any sense, since we work so well together, to not share the amount of money we make with the school district. We do very, very well in economic development. Carol Erlich and Marta Levsky are tremendous, bringing in new projects, high-paying projects, lots of jobs, cleaning up contaminated sites, turning eyesores into attractive building. It's been terrific, and we're going to keep doing it, and then we're going to keep sharing our money with the school district to the point where an $87 million referendum will cost the taxpayers nothing, and we will impact every single kid in the school system, every single teacher, every single principal. They will all, every resident will see something from this referendum. And right now, we're targeting March of 2020. I think the date is March 10. We're working hard with the two architects. One architect's doing 4 and 5. One's doing everything else. They both have submitted plans to the state. They're back and forth. I'm not involved in that directly. The architects are through the district, but we're working hard to try to make sure we hit that deadline, get on the March referendum, and get started. I can't wait to start going around in January and February, and I appreciate all the help that you'll all give to get this passed, but it's a phenomenal project for Woodbridge, and we can't wait to get started.
Dr. Zaga, do you have any comments?
Yes, we will. As the mayor said, we're going to be going around, hitting all the PTO meetings. I've done some preliminary meetings with parents, and surprisingly, very few people even know where the power plan is.
Exactly.
That's funding, you know, the last referendum.
Right.
So based on the success of that referendum, I think, you know, all the parents that I've spoke to, they're very, very supportive, especially with the security, especially with replacing 100-year-old buildings. It's really, it's just as good as last, you know, the 2017 deal. So I look forward to the next couple of months, hitting all the PTO meetings, talking with all the parents, and talking about what a wonderful thing this could be for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments?
I missed that. Could he say it again?
Well, as a parent of a child that goes to Woodbridge Middle School, and all my kids are alumni of Ross Street School 11, I'm really proud of the work that together we were able to do for the children of Woodbridge Township, especially Woodbridge proper, the Ross Street kids and the Woodbridge Middle School kids. As a parent, I got to be honest, I was a little hesitant in the beginning of the school year, afraid that the transition wasn't going to work, but she started middle school, and she's excelled, and she's happy, and every day, I've never had a complaint. So thank you to everyone involved, Brian Small, because he's, you know, in charge of the busing, the security. Everything has worked wonderfully. So, you know, hats off. You guys have done an amazing job. And again, you know, it makes me really proud of the new Ross Street School 11. It's a beautiful building, and I think the children and the teachers and the parents, the community is full of pride, and that's why we do what we do, because it's for our residents, it's for our children and our community. So again, thank you.
Mr. Treibwasser?
Any board members have any comments or things they'd like to say?
I have a couple of things. Last year, I made comment about our shared service agreement and how beneficial it is to our community. And Mayor, you were so lucky for me to feed into the pilot program, but I was at a New[1792.15] And Mayor, you were so lucky for me to feed into the pilot program, but I was at a New Jersey School Boards Association meeting last night, and so happens, they mentioned the value of pilots in Woodbridge Township and how well they execute that pilot program and how the rest of the people in that room would be benefit significantly if they could learn from, and he said Mayor McCormick, for the way he executes the pilot program and how it benefits the school district. But there's a lot of programs that go on in the school district and the municipality that unfortunately the public is really not aware of. Due to your leadership and our technology leadership from the municipal side to our Tech 2000 initiative, we've put in a fiber optic backbone that all of our municipal buildings and school buildings are taking advantage of without having to pay data fees. The school district implemented a VoIP system, which is a voice-over internet phone system, which saved the district tens of $1,000 a month in line charges, and that, again, is also parlayed into the municipal side. The fact that we are two separate entities, but we in essence work as one, is just monumental for our community, and it really has given our community a significant economic leg up compared to all those around us. And, you know, we may notice it as the Board of Education and as the Town Council, but I have to tell you, everybody in the state notices that Woodbridge Township, municipal and school district, work as one, and they achieve amazing things because of that, and Mayor and council and the board and administration. This would never get done unless all of us were open-minded and just want to let everybody know in this room, and hopefully everybody who's watching, this is really a great place to live, and you should really be thankful for the leadership that you have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Council President. If anybody wants to know how it's done, they can certainly call. We're happy to talk to them.
I did give your number out.
Yeah. But it's, just briefly, we have the exact same constituents you do, the exact same constituents. The ones you represent are the ones we represent to the single person. So there is no sense in working at odds. There is no sense in not cooperating because they are, if we were two different businesses, we'd have different customer bases. We're not. We're two different businesses, kind of, but we have the exact same people that we represent and
But it's odd that you're the only one who's really figured that out in the state because everybody else is lagging.
That's okay. That's okay. But thank you for your kind words, and we continue to look forward to working together. It really is a lot of fun, and it's best for Woodbridge Township residents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.